Good morning, everyone. Yes, good morning, Ken Christian. Oh, hi Shay, how are you? I'm great, I'm great. No problem. Yeah, and you were gonna be there Tuesday, I take it normally. Oh, okay, yeah, now. The time that we were gonna be through is a little fluid just yet. I have an appointment in Sam and Arm in the morning, and then I have an appointment in Kelowna at seven in the evening. So we're gonna be driving through in the afternoon, probably, I'm guessing around three o'clock, but that may or may not work for you guys. Okay, all right, good, and now we were gonna pay cash for this. It'll come from checking account. Yeah, no, I'll pay cash for it, that's okay, I do my financing. I'm on the Board of Directors of Interior Savings Credit. So I do all my financing through that way, so it's all. Can't take care of, but, yeah, so we'll just write you a check for that. Now, there was a couple of things that the salesperson had talked about. One was the issue of coating the trailer, which I didn't really want. And there was another issue related to. To the. All right, people are starting to move in. All I got on my screen is a big Ward Stamer sign.
Welcome, everybody, to the Friday, April 22nd, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting in the Thompson Nicola Regional District. The first matter on our, there is a change in the agenda under number three reports. We're going to go first with the regional growth strategy and followed by the regional entrance signs update. So just so that you're not confused as we progress here, and in the meantime, we do have minutes. Second discussions, no discussion, all in favor, anyone opposed? That is carried, and that takes us to the regional growth strategy, and I think Ms. Adilkabas is gonna take it over from here.
Happy Friday, Chair and members of the board, so we have a wrong one. Just brings up, let's just start, we have about a dozen slides and a short 10-minute presentation. Myself and Ursula Vallas, one of our planners, who's worked steadily on this. And our purpose today is to. Okay, our purpose today is, okay, it's not clicking. Now it's clicking, okay, our purpose today is to secure a decision from the board as to whether to commence a 2022 regional growth strategy update. And if you recall, we came to the board last, I think, October or November with a fairly comprehensive presentation. At that point, the inclination from the board at that committee meeting was to proceed with an update. So since then, we have gone out and consulted as directed. So just one slide refresher, because I think there's still confusion out there. What is a regional growth strategy? And as far as I'm aware, we're the only province that has such a creature, because we're the only province with regional districts. So it is our highest level, long-range plan. It forms a kind of planning contract between the rural areas and the incorporated municipalities. It's coordinated at the regional district level. There's about, probably about six or eight regional growth strategies in the province. It is not a mandated plan, so you typically must not have it, although the province has mandated it for a few regional districts, but not for ourselves. There is consistency rules whereby each jurisdiction's official community plan and then zoning bylaw has to be consistent. And in terms, and I've got the last comment, the threshold, as per the province, if you recall, they said the UN has an easier time and meets a lower threshold of consultation and agreement than regional growth strategies in provincial legislation under the local government act. So with that, I will turn it over to Ursula.
Thank you, Regina. So just a little background on TNRD's regional growth strategy. So in 2000, the TNRD adopts its regional growth strategy. Interestingly, the TNRD was the first regional district to adopt an RGS under the new legislation. Then 11 years later, the board resolved to update the RGS via a minor amendment process. And a year following that, the board approved 10 monitoring indicators. Examples of some of those indicators are population, employment, housing, and health. And those indicators are monitored every two years or so.
I just can't hear very well. Director Quinn, could you take it outside, please?
Thank you. So then, yeah, so in, in 2012, those monitoring indicators were approved, and those are things like population, housing, employment, and health. Those are indicators that are monitored every two years or so through a monitoring report, which helps to tell the story of where the region is at with respect to those indicators. And in 2013, the current regional growth strategy was adopted via bylaw 2409, which is the current regional growth strategy that we have today. So in terms of consultation, we sent letters to 69 stakeholders at the beginning of January, and we gave stakeholders about two months to respond. The purpose of this letter was to ask stakeholders if they felt that an update was warranted or not, and why. So essentially, to gauge the appetite for a regional growth strategy update. The stakeholders that we had sent the letters to included relevant provincial ministries, all three school districts, all of the member municipalities, of course, as well as 44 First Nations. And summary of the feedback, so following the two-month time period, we received six responses in total. Three were in favor of an update now. Two were in favor of an update, but not at the present time. And one had no opinion on whether they felt an update was needed, but they did say that they're willing to support if the board decides to proceed. And all of the responses are summarized on page two to three of the report, and we've also included the full responses at the end of the report there. So I'll let Regina continue.
Thank you, so I just finished this off. So the critical question is an update warranted. Our current RGS is the shortest in the province of all, and I've looked, maybe not at everyone, but most of them. It is quite general, but the policies therein are completely defensible. The respondents, the few responses we did that support an update, it was, so that's of the six, I think it was three.
Yeah.
Suggested that our policies do become more prescriptive and more regulatory, which is the standard in other regional growth strategies, and that can make them controversial. But I do want to tell you again, the process requires commitment, it is complex. And if we're going to open it up, I suggest it wouldn't be a tinker. It's not worth the time and effort, that it would be something that we really want to look at with, in a wholesome way, a fulsome way, with all the associated stakeholders. So those would be ministries, so we would be chasing them if they haven't replied. I think only the, even local government, our ministry didn't reply. It was just the Ministry of Agriculture replied. So in terms of financial implications, we believe, we believe if it's minor, even a minor one, so this is the tinkering, would still be about $250,000. This is based on the actual costs of other regional districts who've recently or are currently in this process. And again, that's mainly due to the consultation. And we suggest that this project be contracted out. We are, because of the census came out last year, we are working on a very comprehensive, modern report. So we're collecting all the data that we can for each electoral area and each municipality. Here's a slide of the kinds of expenses. So one is relatively low, and that's in the regional district of Nanaimo, which is smaller than one of our electoral areas, and we do have more municipalities and far more First Nations to involve. But they also, they lessen the threshold of consultation than any of the other ones I'm aware of. So in summary, of the, there's a lot of different options, but the three sort of bodies of options or categories of options are before you there. So it's commence the amendment and direct staff to issue a request for proposal and look at where we can find funds to cover that project for probably about six months of this year. It wasn't in the budget as past. But because it's a multi-year project, really, it would be committing future budgets to that. You could direct consultation for us to go again. I suggest there's no point in sending emails and letters and putting stuff on websites. At this point, you would be finding staff or somebody to send to the municipalities to present, to explain, to go over it in detail, to sort of force them to reply. Or you could hold off amendments for now and just let staff focus on our monitoring report, because again, that's critical as the census data from 2021 comes out this year. That's what we're working on. So I think that's it, questions?
Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regina, how come that there was not very many people in the rural areas outside of the municipalities and ministries that was asked about this with your letter?
Are you thinking like improvement districts?
No, I'm thinking about just people in the rural area.
Yeah.
We have lots of businesses and all kinds of things that are in the rural areas that are not part of a municipality. Then you would have got a better.
Okay, so what we asked at this point was, you know, what do you think of the document as it is now? What would you like to see in it? Do you think revisions, opening it up is warranted rather than going into the detail? If amendment is approved, then we would definitely be going to community meetings in rural areas and digging down to that second, that further level of detail.
Because by all intents and purposes, that I see within the rural areas outside the city of Kama, the growth is exponential, I mean, it's just going mad, mad. So at some point, you're gonna have to deal with all. Yep, that's true.
Director Brown.
Probably January and February, we were a little busy this year, so we didn't really respond to this, and I don't know why. That's my excuse. But I know we need it in our community, and we need it for even grant writing. We need to have that growth strategy at the local level, but also at the regional level. And that's what we're being asked for time and time again. So I'm, I'm ready to move, number one.
Okay, that's moved seconded, I presume that as we continue with the questions that will constitute discussion. I have Director Duty, Director Stamer, Director Christian, and Director Laird. So Director Duty.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Adilkabas. Just for my own curiosity to satisfy that, with municipalities, we're required to review an OCP on a fairly regular basis, you know, between five to 10 years, and that's mandated, I believe, in the charter.
Excuse me, Director Duty.
Yeah.
Could you lean forward just a bit?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is that not the case with an RST?
Yes, that's why we're bringing it to you.
Okay, so we are required to do this on a regular basis?
Yeah, the magic number in every, all these long-range documents is every five years. It doesn't mean you have to change them, you just have to look at them.
Look at them, and then determine whether or not you're gonna make those changes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Stamer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, can you hear me okay? We don't have any video, so we're just, we're just winging it here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, I'm just looking at the numbers, and I thank Ms. Savakamol for the presentation. I mean, we've got, you know, four municipalities out of 11, one First Nations out of 23, one government ministry out of 11, and no school districts responding. And I know we've got responsibilities with OCPs, and, you know, we're doing an asset management plan in barrier. I'm just wondering if this makes sense for us to allow staff to continue to monitor until a new board is sworn in in the fall, and then maybe at that time, we can look at, you know, looking at the next year's budget as well, if we're gonna be trying to pencil in at least $250,000 or $300,000 for this. So I'd like more information on it myself, thank you.
Thank you, Director Christian.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar to Director Stamer, I think that, you know, this is necessary, but the consultation thus far has been a bit underwhelming. And I think with the lack of a budget number in there for this year, I'm a bit startled by the $800,000 figure. It would strike me that we would be able to hire staff within our own planning department for much less specifically for this purpose than to look at a direct award to a private company for this. And I also agree that, given the consultation hasn't been particularly thoroughly responded to to this point, and the fact that we have a municipal election, and the fact that we don't have a budget number, I would prefer option three, that we hold the amendment for now and just inform the new board once we have all of the data provided by the census.
Thank you, Director Christian, and perhaps in the event that the motion on the floor fails, perhaps you'd move suggestion number three.
To do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was around the amount of money that would be required to get the process started. Well, obviously, there is a budget number, a maximum amount, but is it, do you need the maximum amount approved now? Or you just do it year by year, how should you see the funding?
So each regional district does it a little differently. Some regional districts have it as a service where there's on a tax. If there's an allocated amount for a regional growth strategy, and they have staff just for that, we roll it into the planning service as a whole, because everybody participates in it. So at this point, no, of course, we don't need the whole amount. But it would be, and we can do an RFP, but we want to know very clearly what's in that RFP to get an accurate. Or um if we're going to do an RFP, but as uh Director Christian said, to hire staff. Um. Yeah, that would be far less than the hundred thousand. Or the, we, we gave a low ball of two hundred and fifty thousand, but it would be far less than eight hundred thousand. Again, it's partly the traveling, the number of bodies to consult. And because we have a relatively high number of municipalities, that's where it comes into play. Why I don't think we'd be the same as low as Nanaimo. But to start in this year's budget, I'd say fifty to a hundred thousand to even just start the process. But there would be some spinning of the wheels, I believe.
One other question. Um, do you feel it, it would be advantageous to start this process now? Just maybe um looking RFP or making a decision whether you want to do staff or not, or is uh?
I, I believe it would be more advantageous to do it after. The um monitoring report is done and all the stats can data's out and but then hit the ground running and try and compress it. Um, some of those municipalities, where were they? Like, there, some of those included legal action and arbitration. So Metro Van, we're not in the world of Metro Van in the capital regional district. So I didn't even contact them for, for quotes because they're astronomical. Um, so I think it's better to finish the report and, and start it then. And you know, if the board would like to look at, they can make a decision today whether to contract it out. Um, you have power until November this board, even the first, isn't it the first meeting after the election? The board can still make decisions. Yeah, until through to November. So at least we hit the ground running because around November is when the last of the census data comes out. And we want to have the report done ideally around November, December.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there, are there any further questions or any further discussion, Director Singh?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm, I'm sort of like, I think this has to be actually part of a regular, you know, process in the funding pocket. I mean, that kind of like comes to the board and say, should we do it every, you know, every four or five years? I mean, if we're managed to do it, we should probably just kind of start a process here where it doesn't even, it just sort of happens automatically. Even the funding is kind of put away so that it's kind of done. So we're looking at the funny, obviously, the sticker shot kind of a thing at the, at this point in time. But I, I think it's, it is important to start um doing this. And I think it's important for us to um, you know, to take it away from these discussions that happen maybe four or five years. We say, well, you know, the money is so much, but I think we have to actually have this as a function that kind of keeps on going. So I'm kind of surprised, for example, it's not already baked into a budget that we would just kind of, you know, put money, you know, to do it every, and build it up. Until then, we kind of get it done kind of thing. So um, so I think it's to, to start that process, maybe our staff even to kind of look at how it gets kind of into the whole system. Um, you know, over the course of time so that it doesn't have to come to these kind of like discussions that are sort of, you know, off-budget years uh would make sense to me.
Thank you, Director Fulderman.
Thank you. Um, what type of reports would the municipality have? Municipalities have to come up with in order to make this regional growth strategy plan sort of? How do you say that? You know.
So there would be certain agreements, especially it, it's a way to broker um cross jur- jurisdictional matters. We have some policies like the fringe area policy already in place. Um, those can be strengthened, uh items such as uh municipal boundary extensions. Those come into play. Or if you look at planning between um Ashcroft and Cash Creek, which are our most proximate municipalities. Um, other kinds of agreements. It can become, be, be an umbrella to review other kinds of agreements like support for. If one municipality feels there needs to be a lot of housing, especially to accommodate rural folks. Um, agreements can be brokered through the regional growth strategy. Uh, in areas where there, the more growth pressure there is, the more logic there is for it. Um, so if, i- in what happens in some of these, like if you look at Comox Valley, you have three municipalities. Cumberland, Comox and Courtney. And they were mandated to have it because they have so many shared systems like water systems. And there was a certain competition for development because really one big metro area. And um it was thought that there needed to be some control where one municipality didn't approve. A huge development, high densities, creating a pile of traffics, kind of like the Callwood Crawl in Victoria. Those are the ki- those are the kinds of agreements that are in a regional growth strategy. We have less of that, but there's certainly the, the window to look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Director Brown, Director Swan, Director Rice. Director Brown?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I want to just make a statement that says budgets are not static when we. Build them for May fifteenth or whatever that date is. We look at adding staff at the end of a year. We use the surplus within the budget to pay for some of these staff. That's, that's okay to do. Uh, we can also adjust a budget and, and add in costs to a budget. So we are not bound by just this was our budget, so therefore we can't do anything else, we are stuck. The other thing I wanted to bring up was some of these issues that we are looking at are considered regional issues to. A governing agency or a funding agency, housing is one of them. If there is housing units everywhere in the district, we're probably not going to get a whole lot of housing district based on this regional growth strategy. On the other hand, uh Merritt has received funding for an abattoir recently because there isn't anything in the region. And, and we have picked up those dollars. Our funding agents need updated regional growth strategies. And we are asked often for our um, a more updated regional growth. So I am pleased to know that we are going ahead with this. We've got our, our hand in a lot of funding uh projects right now. And we as a city need this.
Thank you, Director Swan.
Thank you, Chair Gillis. Um, in this case, I have to agree with Director Christian on number three. It is an election year and the new board may have different views than what we do. And we can budget for it to start in twenty twenty-three, but go ahead with that monitoring report. So we have a starting point for the new board. And I don't know why our municipality did not respond to that letter. I have no information on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just before I forget uh to ask this, Ms. Delk. But do I understand that your preference is uh for number two or, or for, for number three?
I can't. I'm, I'm Switzerland.
I, I, I'm pleased. I, it's, it's been a long time since I've managed to score such a direct hit.
You know. If we make it more regulatory and prescriptive and precise, it will have, that will be passed by a future board. And many of you may still be here, or I don't know. So um if we get our walking papers to do this, I want, I would, whether we hire somebody or get a, get, do an RFP. We could compromise and start a little slower, maybe look at starting in the fall. And piggyback right when we bring that monitoring report. We've already started, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Picking away at it.
Yeah. And so, you know, we could start looking. It's very hard to get qualified staff these days too. Like it's not easy. So it can take us three or four, if we're gonna go with the hiring option. Like if the decision from the board today is ask for the resolution on the floor. It's gonna take us a few months to get going anyway to find the right person and to seek for them. So that was a really non-answer.
I noticed that, but it was a good non-answer, Ms. Delk, a very good one. Uh Director Rice.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I have to agree with uh Directors uh Swan, Stamer and Christian on this. Uh, uh, I, I think for one thing, um, you know, staff is pretty stretched already and stuff like that. And to visit it now, we have, we have the resources maybe, but uh I don't think adding to their inbox at this point in time is a good thing. And there might be some financial implications also. We do have a new board coming on fairly soon. And that also is a concern. And to Director Elliott's point, I think the consultation process is, some of the mayors have mentioned that they did not respond. It would give them a chance to respond and also maybe get a little bit out into the rural area uh for response there also. Before we make these decisions and stuff, since it was going to be after the fact that we go to rural. And I would suggest it might be better to go before the fact. And so I would be very much in support of number three. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Brown again.
I want to speak to election year. We are the board, we are the board now until November. Whatever new board comes in, so be it. We're asked for this decision at this time. It's not, let's leave everything for the new board. I think we need to make a decision at this point as to what to do. If we leave it, so be it. But I think this is the board that is being asked to make the decision.
Thank you. Are there any, is there any further discussion with respect to Director Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I am going to vote against this, but there are some reason to think that in the next six months. That we hold the power of this decision, that we didn't get a good cross-reference. We have a lot of other issues besides within the municipality. We have a lot of growth within this regional district at this time. And, and I don't think um with no money in the budget. And I, uh Director Brown has said, oh, well, we can move that some money around. And maybe we can. But over the years, we've all been told that if it's not in the budget, you can't spend it. So um I really think that our staff has to do a look at the kind of things that are. Within, without, outside of the municipalities and how, what the rural growth is going to do to those municipalities. Because if I look around just my own area, it is going to affect counties like there's no tomorrow.
Director Duty?
Thank you. Just one last question. Like, I, I guess we could go through this whole thing and discuss it for the next two to three hours. And I'm not going to be quite as pointed with my question, but is it absolutely critical that we go with this now or can we wait?
Um. It, it can wait to do the update. You, you can pass, but I would look for a resolution that you've looked at it and we're gonna put it off for six months or one year or five years. You have, you are the board now and you can make that decision.
So give a defined date if we're gonna put it out.
Yeah.
So say with.
Or give us, just give, we want direction, really.
Fair enough.
Okay, I, I think Director Duty indirectly asked the uh, the question that's been troubling me, Ms. Delk. And that is, is the lack of a, of an update causing you any problems at this time? And is it likely to cause you any problems in the next, over the next few months?
No, it is not causing problems over the next few months. Like I said, it is a, there's, there's nothing functionally wrong in the document. It's just not as rich and it's still dated.
Okay, and I think my other question was uh with respect to option number one. And, and I'm inclined to support this uh, the motion that's on the floor. But uh with respect to option number one, uh the first. Thing it says, the second thing it says is, is to direct staff to issue an RFP. So that would preclude, uh it seems to me, Director Christian's suggestion that we investigate the possibility of doing this in-house. Which should be, I would hope considerably less uh expensive than a eight hundred thousand dollar project.
Okay, so this, that can be, I believe that can be a friendly amendment. That's, um, it's just to direct staff to initiate the process, could be fine, we understand. Um, it could be less, it depends on how detailed it becomes. Uh, I imagine that there will be um maps associated with specific policies and specific targets in it. Um, again, right now, there, there's no argument with the majority of the policy in the regional growth strategy. But it is, if I may use the word, a collection of motherhood statements.
I'm sorry, it is what?
A collection of motherhood statements.
Um, frankly, I have, I have no trouble with that because when you say the, the next one should be more regulatory. It strikes to me that, that you could translate that into saying it should be more invasive. And that, all of that gives me more, more pause. Uh Director Singh?
Just a couple of things, Chair. What is it? Um, we're gonna spend this money sometime. Uh, and so I'm not sure why we're not, like, we can spend it now because it's gonna have to happen. It's gonna be more expensive probably in a year's time. Uh, and secondly, I, I don't think that this is a political process. It's a process, it doesn't matter which board you're on, it's a matter of basically getting it going on a regular basis. So it's, the, the, actually, the board obviously eventually has to make political decisions about it. But to get the process going is a political discussion. So the new board, when they come in, I'm assuming they'll say, yeah, we gotta do this. And then it's gonna be more expensive. Um, and Director Brown's comments around funding from other agencies kind of comes to, comes to my mind. Like, if we're actually at the region not missing out on um funding opportunities from other agencies because we're not doing this in time, it's updated enough. That would really worry me because there is a lot of um funding coming down from the province, the federal government, other agencies that are actually there. Obviously, with Director Brown's case with it, with a disaster uh in, in her community. So I, I mean, I, I think it's important to do this now. Uh, I do number one.
Thank you. I have Director Swan.
Thank you, Jer, Jer Gullis. Uh, through you to Ms. Savak, Sadokova. Um, is the monitoring report the first step in the process?
The, the monitoring report is required anyway.
Okay.
Um.
But is that required before we can?
No, it's not required.
Commence with the rest of it?
It's not required before.
Okay. But it still needs to be done, even if we don't commence with amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Rice.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna go back to the point that uh Director Elliott brings up and I brought up that uh, you know, when the uh consultation was done. Um, apparently, a few of the mayors did not submit, and that's fine. But however, um, nothing was actually consulted with any of the rural directors or the rural areas or however you want to. Uh, direct the consultation to the rural areas and stuff like this. So it, it's fine when the municipal director says, let's go now. And, you know, we're gonna spend the money now or we're gonna spend the money later. I would suggest we spend the money after we do some robust consultation with everybody. Because rural is growing very fast in this day and age. As you can ask the rural mayors, um, you know, what's happening in our communities? And what's happening is somewhat of a growth explosion. And uh, there's nothing for sale in Spencer's Bridge, that's never happened in my lifetime. So I think we're jumping on a boat that hasn't been fully filled with the, the information we need to, to begin a regional growth strategy. Um, without real consultation, I think is a mistake. So I will still be support number three and I will not support this amendment.
Thank you, Director Laird.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We keep hearing about the immense growth that's going on in the regional district municipalities. And what this will do will actually give direction for the new growth that's coming. I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we direct staff to, I guess, do the, that warning to start the process because I think part of the process will be talking to area directors and, and rural communities because that's part of the process. So until you start the process, we're going to go back and gather more information and then come back to the board and said, we've done the consultation with the, and it should all be part of the growth strategy. So I would like to just change that and remove the RFP statement and just give direction for staff to basically start the process. Whether there's a budget, budget implications with that or not, I think we just have to know that. But at least the staff will be given direction of where this board wants to go. Thank you.
Let's move and seconded that the option number one be amended to direct staff to initiate the process. And I understand that your amendment is to delete the word, direct staff to issue the RFP. Would you say consider, I guess they can, under your amendment, they can consider the RF issuing an RFP, but that would probably come back to the board. Is that right? Or let them consider issuing an RFP and also consider in-house, just, just get the process underway. Okay. Microphone.
The other question is the funding issue. So, you know, how much funding are we looking at starting the process in this year's budget?
Yeah, well, it's, okay, I think we've dealt with that issue. So that's, that's the, that's the motion. Is there any discussion on the, on the amendment? Director Ray.
Just a question to planning staff. How much, if, if we go through this process, how do we coordinate the OCP work that all the municipalities will be doing? It seems to me to be effective on this. This also requires coordination from the municipal governments to update and, and and, and kind of amend their own OCPs, which is also a, a big requirement. We're just going through an OCP refresh and, and that's not even cheap, just to have a little, a little look at it. So there are, I, I would believe that we'd have to coordinate OCPs and the regional growth strategy.
Yes, that is a requirement. And the municipalities all refer to their OCPs before adoption to the regional district. We review it and we bring it to the board. And there's, there's quite a clear process for that. So it's not just a general, and we look, we review in each facet of the OCP specifically how it's consistent with the RGS.
Yeah, it's supplementary of them. I mean, in our, our case, we, we haven't reviewed our OCP now for, we've actually put it off five or six, seven years. But what, what is the status of all of the other municipalities? Kamloops, where's Kamloops with their OCP? Where are the other municipalities? Because this is a factor because it's, if, if everybody's a little bit like us for a few years behind, then there's a whole bunch of work to be done by municipalities. When we went out to look at refresh or redo, I mean, a redo is in $150,000 range, just for the municipality.
So there is no, say they, we went through the process and it took two or three years. There is no immediate trigger that requires all the jurisdictions, including the rural electoral areas, to review their OCPs. It would just come in time. It's an ongoing process. And I believe the city of Kamloops, right before COVID, their OCP went through, and I believe it took at least two years. So in legislation, I said the magic number was five, if you recall. Realistically, it's a never-ending treadmill for long-range planning and very, people try to do it once every 10 years because it overlaps the five years, the three years or however, because it's an ongoing process. I don't know of very many places that do a comprehensive review every five years.
Thank you, Director Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I would, I would be in favor of staff starting to look at the process in terms of options for funding and whether it could potentially be in houses, Director Christian mentioned. So I'd be in, in favor of that part, but I guess my question is, is the intent to actually do a more prescriptive and regulatory model this time around? Or are we talking about doing basically an update to what we already have?
That's, that's a big question. At this point, my, from what I'm hearing, it would be a more comprehensive review and change, not just a minor update first. It would take, I'm assuming, the, the minor one from a few years from 2013, that started in 2011. So if you can look at it that way. I, I'm sorry, there wasn't, was there another question I haven't answered? Oh, the funding, that's, you know, we, that's up to the board and future budgets. And how long it takes. The Squamish Lilloit, when that went to arbitration, they didn't see that coming. They didn't, certainly didn't budget that, the, the million or whatever it took. So what you, you, you can't set a budget for review process like this at the, at the, at the beginning because you just never know what's going to happen. When we went through that minor amendment, it was supposed to be a minor. We had one director out of 25 vote against it, so threw it into a major. So you have no, nobody knows until they started.
Thank you. Still with respect to Director Laird's amendment, I have Director Stamer, Director Brown, and Director Stamer. Director Brown?
The city of Merritt is going through a new OCP process right now. And we are looking at climate change issues and we are looking at increasing development. We have changed it from our 2007 version to now. And part of that is trying to be in compliance with the regional district's growth strategy. But again, this district's growth strategy is old and we can't even begin to conform to that because it doesn't have what we need as a city for our OCP. We are at the stage, it's been three and a half years now, we were looking at our first reading at the next city council meeting.
Thank you. Director Blackwell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be in favor of adding funding for this on an ongoing basis to budget for this and similar reports. Having this, we, we know this, we know OCPs, we know other major reports come up on a regular basis. Let's just start adding a amount to go into reserves for these things. As far as this one goes, it, it sounds like a long conversation. The District of Clearwater has an outdated OCP. We're going to start that process. Our last one, I think, took four and a half or five years. I was part of that process before becoming on council, becoming part of council. I, I don't expect the next one to be any less than two and a half, three years, even if we started this fall after the election, which is the intent at this point. So, you know, waiting for triggers to happen within municipalities, I think is, it's not pointless, but it, it's somewhat irrelevant because there's always going to be change. So let's just get on with it.
Thank you. Director Stamer. And I think that will be it as far as the discussion of Director Laird's amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick questions, I guess, to Mr. Volkova. You know, we've got, like I mentioned, one out of 43 First Nations that ended up sending back the, the consultation referral and the fact that you mentioned this is, you know, started over 10 years ago and the landscape has changed. Is there any provincial funding for any of this kind of work? Because I'm wondering, you know, we, we're doing an analysis management plan at the district and we're also going to be reviewing our OCP. I'm wondering where the province's responsibility lies in some of this, particularly if we've got this many First Nations in our regional district. I agree that we should be getting the ball rolling and I, I appreciate Director Laird's friendly amendment because I think that makes sense. And I, I really appreciate what, what Director Brown is mentioning about, you know, we have a responsibility to do this work. But is there any provincial funding for any of this kind of work right now? Or is it something that we should be looking forward as, on an ongoing basis, as Director Singh is saying, you know, we should be budgeting for this because it's something that should be an ongoing event?
Mr. Dilke, was that, I thought that was.
Not recently, but there was 10 years ago, 15 years ago, there was quite a bit of money for specifically for regional growth strategies. The province has sort of shifted away to other priorities, so there isn't anything specific now. We can see if we can stretch any of the other grant opportunities that are out there to help fund this. But none that I know.
Okay, fair, yeah, fair enough. But again, like I mentioned, I think we should be pushing, pressing the provincial government because I'm sure everybody's in the same boat and we want to get that data as quick, you know, as, as quickly as we can, knowing it's going to take at least two or three years to get, you know, get a pretty good look of what's actually happening in our region through a growth strategy report. But I agree that we've got to, we've got to get going here as quickly as we can.
Thanks, Director Stamer. So on Director Laird's amendment, all in favor? Is anyone opposed? I see Director Rice, Director Christian. Is anyone else, Director Schaefer and Elliott? Is anyone else opposed?
Director Ray.
Director Ray, thanks. So that, the amendment carries. That brings us then to the, to the motion itself, which was on the floor as amended. All in favor?
Could we have that read out, please?
That committee of the whole direct staff to initiate the process of amending the RGS and, and consider issuing an RFP and consider budget implications.
That sounds amended. So now, all in favor? Any opposed? My goodness, one, two, three, four. Well, I better name you. Director Watson, Director Schaefer, Director Elliott, Director Rothenberger, Director Smith, Director Polderman, Director Quinn, Director Roden, Director Christian, Director Rice.
Director Ryan.
Director Ray. See you very well there, Director Ray. Not much like. Or Director Walsh. Have you counted them, Ms.?
I'll turn to our reporting secretary. Maybe she caught them. It was a little quick for me. Did you get them, Olivia? Okay, thank you. 12.
How many are we?
It's tied, it fails, right? So it should be 22, I think. Talarico, Graham, and O'Reilly are away. So out of 20, out of 23, 12. So it would be defeated, I believe.
So the motion fails. But we are 24 members here today. Is that correct, Mr. Hildebrandt?
Now that I see Director Graham, that would make sense. O'Reilly and Talarico, I don't see. So that would be 24, you're correct.
So with 12 opposed, the motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move recommendation three.
So is there any further discussion on recommendation number three? I think we've probably discussed it to death, but I should give you the opportunity. Hearing none, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. It obviously passes. Those opposed, I'll, I'll, we'll name you so that you can have your voice, votes recorded. So opposed? Director Blackwell, Director Brown. I don't see any hands up on the screen. So Blackwell, Brown, and Gillis opposed. And that passes. It's carried. So still dealing with the regional growth strategy. I guess we have dealt with that recommendation. Fine. That takes us to regional entrance signs update. Is that one yours, Mr. Vera?
Good morning, everyone. Waiting for my presentation. There we go. All right. So I am just giving an update on this process on the highway entrance signs. So a bit of a short history background. I was doing some digging on this and I actually found a PowerPoint presentation with sign mockups for highway entrance signs from 2004. So that's how long this has been discussed at this board level. And maybe even going back before then. But most recently, there was discussion at the October 2021 Economic Development Committee meeting. So Ron Story led that discussion. So essentially what I'm doing today is picking up where he left off, updating the whole board through the committee of the whole on where this process is at. And my intent here is to let you know what we're moving forward on. And if there's any feedback or discussion, we'd be happy to hear it. So at that meeting in October, there was some, some direction on design, location, and budget, which I'll talk about in this presentation. But I guess upfront, I'll, I'll state that we haven't done any further work on this since that October meeting. As you all know, when Ron's, last week here, when he retired, was the week of the flooding event. And that's when I moved into this role. Plus, we've had ongoing disaster and fire recovery work and other priority projects that have been on the go. So we haven't done any further work on this, but yes, I'm here to say it's still on the radar to move forward with. So what has been decided to date, and again, this is mostly from the October meeting. So there was a lot of detailed. And again, this is mostly from the October meeting, so there was a lot of detailed discussion around this, what we came out with was consensus that there was, the wording was going to be the welcome to the Thompson Nicola Regional District, the full words plus the logo on a sign, it was going to have the blue background, it was going to be double-sided sign, so it could be welcome to and thanks for visiting on your way out idea. Wood style frame, and there was some discussion about whether it be placed on, on the highway right away or looking at private land. And so the decision was to pursue ideally on the Modi right away, and if that wasn't an option, looking at Crown, Crown right away. So the, there was a number of designs that were discussed back and forth. But the motion of that committee was this wood style sign with the overstructure, now clarify, you know, this is still the concept, this isn't the final design. But this color and, and the wood structure was what was the preferred design. And to take it a step further, this is borrowing from actually the Caribou Regional District's welcome sign. We just stole that and got my co-chair graphic designer to put our sign over top, so that's just an example of what it could look like, so I don't know if in real life, if we can just go take their sign down and put ours up, we could see how long that lasts. There would be an interesting, yeah, after midnight, see how long it stays up there. So the location, so that was discussed in a lot of detail to committee meeting as well, so bit of a recap, there are eleven highway entrance exits to the TNRD. So what the, the committee decided is to focus on the five locations as a starting point for these signs. The, the, of the eleven locations, my understanding is that there's the Ministry of Transportation does not allow welcome to style signs on their freeways, so the Coca-Halla and the Coca-Halla Connector wouldn't be eligible, so that leaves nine that would, would be an option to have the entrance sign. But these five locations, you know, in my opinion, do make the most sense, they're, they're spread out around the region and are the kind of the main corridors. Also, my opinion is these locations are often, you know, in my current role and previous roles are often the, the locations where people are confused of where the regional district starts and stops. So I'll just go through those kind of one at a time. So these are just the Google map images, so this is Highway five near Alberta. This location actually has a, a welcome to Fraser Fort George sign already in place, so it would go hand in hand with that. Highway one, south of Litton. One of the nice things about this location, and again, this, we haven't done the detailed work or the permitting with Ministry of Transportation. You can see here, right at the regional district line, there already is an existing highway pullout, so that would be an ideal location for a sign as well, because people are often stopping there anyway, and it gives us room to put a sign. Ninety-seven between West Wald and Falkland, this is one of those locations that I've found has always been a bit confusing for people who live there of exactly where the regional district boundary starts and stops, it'd be nice to have one there. And ninety-seven north at seventy mile. Or north of seventy mile, sorry. Yeah, Google map there must have been during the fires, it's a little smoky. Yeah. The fifth one is at, at east, northeast of Chase. We may be challenged here with the exact location because it's right up against the water, but that will be part of the process of figuring out exactly where the sign can be located. Yep.
Okay, could it wait until the end of the presentation or?
The, the regional district boundary is seventy mile, but I thought, where's Clinton, is it not north of seventy mile?
Clinton's south of seventy mile.
So seventy mile is the actual border with, because we talk about Green Lake and all of those being half and half.
Yeah, so on the, on the highway, on Highway ninety-seven, as you head north, the, our border is north of seventy mile towards Hundred Mile House. So that's where the sign would be.
Thanks, Mr. Vera, can you just wait till the end of the presentation, Director Watson, thank you, please go ahead, Mr. Vera.
So from a budget point of view, again, discussed at the meeting was up to, and keep in mind, this is a high level number, but up to twenty thousand dollars per sign. So that's the, the wood frame for the sign, about seven thousand, sign, the actual sign panel printed up and I got a high-grade metal or wooden sign panel, engineering if required, that may be a Ministry of Transportation requirement depending on the location and then the installation costs. Just to put this in context, Sherry Madden, our services coordinator in the North Thompson, is actually currently working on a sign project for Ebola and Blue River. And the design, designs already completed there, but her budget on those signs is about twelve thousand dollars per sign, so this is in, is on the upper end, but this is what was put forward at that fall meeting, is kind of the, the top end. So funding, this is kind of what I want to kind of close off with is, and this again was discussed at the meeting, there was a number of options for funding, but I kind of wanted to fine tune this a little bit. So obviously, this is capital project, it could be funded from Canada Community Building Funds, and how that would look could be up for discussion in terms of the EA contributions towards this project. But there's also COVID funding that we received last year that is sitting in the Regional Economic Development Budget. So the Regional Economic Development Service is a service that's funded through all electoral areas and all municipalities. So that service exists, however, for, it hasn't been taxed in many, many years, but it's still on the books as a service. Some of the COVID relief funding got put into that budget, so this is money that did not come from taxation. And there is budget allocated in there for, sorry, budget there that's not allocated for anything else that could be used for this project. So the total budget is, is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of essentially cash in the bank in that budget. About thirty thousand of it's allocated to another project, so that leaves eighty-five. As I mentioned, our budget is up to twenty thousand per sign, so a hundred thousand dollar project, so in all likelihood, you know, when we come back with a detailed cost analysis, which I'll talk about next slide, next steps, we could probably do this project within that, that COVID relief funding, so no, no cost to taxpayers. So next steps from staff point of view is that we're going to work towards confirming the exact locations and requirements with Ministry of Transportation. So that'll be permitting requirements as well, do a detailed sign design that includes a precise cost estimate. And then the intent is then to come back to the board with a full detailed report requesting approval of the project, which including where the funding's coming from. So that would also be probably a contract award recommendation as part of that report. So the reason we're coming now is I just wanted to update the whole board, that's my intent, I don't want to do all this work and then find, it's, you know, it's, it's not supported at that point. So kind of wanted to open it up for discussion and questions now.
Director Watson.
Thank you. Having the honor of being here since two thousand and four. I remember we had funding from that venture Camelops turned back to us because it did such a poor job of representing the region other than Camelops, is that funding still available?
Interesting, we could look into that. I, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that, that agreement was funded through that Regional Economic Development Budget, which is what I'm proposing we use. And there actually is carry forward money in that, so who knows how long it's been there, but I could check with Doug exactly where that carry forward comes from.
Okay, and a second question, we have Highway ninety-nine and twenty-four as well, and they may not be big entrances to the region. Would they get a smaller sign? Or just a little tin one like we have already?
Yes, so good question, that's up for discussion, I know at the meeting in the fall, it was discussed that, you know, as a starting point, we'd do these five signs, it wasn't that we don't put them in the other locations. So I think that could be a subsequent, you know, do this as the first phase of this project, and, and then we go back to the board with, with the next phase. So the remaining four locations, if we don't count the Coca-Halla, is ninety-nine, Highway twelve. And so, 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 west of Litton, the ninety-five A to the highway to Princeton. And what was the fourth one, and Highway twenty-four, yeah.
Director Roden.
Thank you, just to speak to that from the committee, the discussion. Of course, the signs have to be placed in reasonable approximation to where the boundary of the TNRD is, and the challenges on those roads were that in the actual location where the boundary is, on the case of Highway ninety-nine, you would be putting a sign in a lake. So there was nowhere really on first glance to easily and inexpensively place a sign. That's why these five locations were decided on first because they were relatively quote-unquote straightforward. And then the thinking was that that would then give time to try to find a compromise or an ideal location on the other routes.
Thank you, Director Rice.
Thank you, on the, on the other signs, the smaller signs and stuff, I just wanted to comment on that after the October discussion. I was visiting my mom a lot in Lilawet, and I took a picture of the sign, the Squamish, Lilawet Regional District sign there along the way from Litton to Lilawet, and the, also the one from Cash Creek to Lilawet, and sent it into the staff or Scott or whoever, I sent it in, the pitcher anyways. And it's a smaller sign, it's, I think about two by two, it's metal, I don't think it would cost that much, and I just thought if we put that, since we, you know, my area borders two regional districts, the Fraser Valley and the Squamish-Lilawet Regional, I thought it would be new, nice to have them on the other side of the road because they already have their signs there, but I wanted, I would want to be sort of complimentary to the Squamish-Lilawet Regional District, being somewhat the same. So that's my only thought on those two signs, I would certainly like them, because when this discussion first took place, that's why I took the picture. And I think that would be you know, an inexpensive way to mark our regional district too, as, as we're coming and leaving, so, just about.
Thank you, Director Stamer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thanks for the, thanks for the presentation, Jamie. Yeah, I, I think the engineering might be a little bit low, but I certainly think that that installation cost is high, and I'm looking forward to your more of a, more of a precise estimate next time around, so thanks very much.
Thank you, Director Blackwell.
Highway twenty-four, Caribou already has one of these, we just partnered with Caribou and put ours on the back of it, some small way, seriously saved some money. I hate saying, with all due respect, but with all due respect, this is, with all the challenges of the TNRD, this is what we're working on, sorry.
Thank you, Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to carry forward from Director Watson. I do believe that we spent some of that venture capital Camelops money on the airport advertisement. Maybe Director Christian could do that, but we did talk about it a fair amount at that time, and I think we did put some money in there, so it won't all be there.
Thank you, Director Brown.
I don't think I had my hand up.
Sorry, Director Quinn, Roden and Laird, Director Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I personally, I think this is a really good idea, I like the idea of staging five and then others is needed. Sign that's a breeder right now has been bashed to hell by the snowplows, so it's sort of all bent and twisted, the only thing that's really clear is nine-one-one. The only comment I would like to make to Mr. Vera is, we have different highway regions, and they're their own empires. So we might have to do some coordination, when, I'm not trying to tell you to do your job, but there is that interregional discussion, as happens in highways. But if we all go with the, if you go with a similar plan to all, it makes it easier, and we will have had some experience this summer on installing ours and pitfalls that we can, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Director Roden.
Thank you, Director Blackwell, you gave voice to what I was expecting someone to give voice to. Just a reminder, this came up at the strategic planning session we held at the Paramount Theater, and the timeline, when was that, late in twenty twenty? Early twenty twenty-one, so well before the challenges of the recent months, and then, of course, this report came from October twenty twenty-one from the Economic Development Committee meeting. So it came from a different time. And I think there was a feeling possibly that it would not have even progressed past the committee stage, but it has arrived here and people need to decide if this is what we need to be focusing on at this time.
Thank you, Director Laird.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I was actually on the board in two thousand and four when we had this discussion, and I think we have the opportunity to actually make a decision and get some signs up, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, pardon?
They might be legacy hands.
Yeah. Okay. The only comment that I would make, Jamie, is that, well, other than the fact that I'm in favor of it, and I think we should do it, and I think we should do it properly, and I would lean towards stealing the the general theme of the, of the Caribou signs, because they're beautiful. The only thing I would say is that if we're going to cheap out on these signs, let's not do it at all, we can hardly put up signs that say the region of BC's best. And, and then turn around and, and put up some kind of a shot, shabby, shoddy sign, so if we're going to do it, my vote would be A, to do it, and B, to do it right, Director Watson?
Please, let's lose that tagline. Region of BC's best, please, let's lose that.
Well, we've adopted that, and it's there for good, as far as I can understand, unless we have a motion to take it away. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Vera.
I, I've just been hearing some questions about whether there's a recommendation, so at this point, I just kind of let, let the committee know what I'm proceeding with, so and we're not looking for a recommendation unless, essentially unless you want me to not pursue this. It's on our, our work plan to, to pursue it and come back to the board with a very specific recommendation for the costs, where the budget's coming from, and, and a contract award to make it all happen.
Thanks very much, that's what I understood we were doing today. Thanks kindly for the presentation and the update. Yeah, it's, it's a legacy one. Okay, that takes us, I think, to item three point three, and we're going to have a report from the General Manager of Development Services regarding the step code primer or primer, I've never known which.
Primer, so also, this is really to, for your information and to prepare you for Silga next week. Myself and our chief building official, Tony Bolton, will be doing the presentation, so you don't have to debate if you don't want to. And as a, just as a pause, a lot of the city folks will already have heard a great deal about this from their staff because the city of Camelops has, is ahead of the region. They have adopted step three, I believe. But this will be coming up, and, you know, Litton as well is, they're way ahead of the rest of the province. So we're going to give you some context information. You, I did the unusual thing of creating a little You, I did the unusual thing of creating a little booklet. For the folks that are zooming in, I will make sure that there's a paper booklet put into your mailbox or we can email it to you if you'd like. This is a little takeaway that you can hopefully take to Silga and UBCM. They will, there will be speakers speaking to this next week, the Canadian Home Builders Association, the local chapter. And we wanted to make sure you were fully briefed. Not going to read all this, but I'm just going to point out the image on the cover. And all almost most of the pictures in this have been lifted from the provincial websites on the step code. But you can see the top house is a conventional house. So a great deal of heat loss or solar gain in summer occurs through the windows, the roof. And the wall assembly, so the studs, the headers and what have you below. There's a properly insulated house, so the majority of heat loss is just through the windows. Now. I am going to turn it over to, we have about fifteen, maybe eighteen minute presentation. I'm going to turn the next few slides over to Tony.
Good morning. Thanks, Regina. What is the BC step code? Is it the unloved stepchild of the BC building code? Most experienced builders and budget stretched owners would would say yes. It's really a series of steps. They're increasingly more difficult to scale the higher you go up. In other words, a staircase to net zero readiness. Unique to BC, the BC step code consists of performance targets for improving the building envelope. Mechanical system efficiency and energy use efficiency overall. It was first introduced in April of twenty seventeen as an optional route to code compliance before the requirements became mandatory. And that future looms as the predicted implementation date in the BC building code is to require step three throughout the province. The plan at twenty seventeen was to give time for local governments and the building community to capacity build in a series of incrementally more efficient buildings. Step code will apply to all part nine buildings, which are the smaller residential, commercial and industrial buildings. And to part three buildings as well, which are the larger and more complex buildings that have both larger footprints and more occupants. So that's the BC step code. And what are the BC steps? Currently in the BC building code, we have prescriptive requirements to meet. And those requirements vary by climate zone. So the colder the region, the part of the region, the the higher the requirement is for insulation. No CEA, which is a certified energy advisor, is required to come and monitor. How you build or how airtight your building got to. However. These are the steps, the five steps that are awaiting us. If you look at step one, that is the next step up from where we are right now. Enhanced compliance means that we get to hire a consultant to model our proposed building and computer software. And then later to check our workmanship in sealing the vapor barrier, but with no other required changes. It's a little step most often bypassed in favor of taking on more height in one transition. So the the communities around the province, the local governments that have adopted the step code voluntarily prior to this date. Have generally proceeded on to a higher step level, either two or three in the city of Kamloops is level three. And that's just started in January first, I believe, of this year. So they had a flood of applications just prior to that date, I believe, something like hundreds of applications to kind of beat out this requirement that was looming. And I think they finally got to, I talked to Jason Dixon and. And Lee Lundgren over at the city that they had finally got through all those permits that had been submitted. Prior to December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Step two, as you go up, it, as you can see on the slide, ten percent more efficient than a base home that would meet prescriptive code. Typically with a step two, you're going to have to improve on your door and window efficiencies. And likely install an HRV, which is a heat recovery ventilator to scavenge some of the heat off of air that's being pumped to the outdoors. Before it goes outdoors, it exchanges heat with with the incoming air. We'll talk about that in a little bit more detail later. Steps. Step three is planned for twenty twenty two everywhere in the province. Although it's considered still a lower level by some building geeks like myself, a building technologist, this level requires a twenty percent improvement. It doesn't sound like a lot, but the measures that are typically needed to achieve step three. Involve either exterior insulation to avoid thermal bridging through more dense components of the building. Studs and framing. Or installation of spray foam in stud cavities to achieve a better airtightness and a higher level of insulation in the same thickness of stud cavity. Other things that are done in that level, of course, include the HRV installation just to get to a step three. Step four, planned for twenty twenty seven by the province. Is again going to be required everywhere in the province as far as we know. It's a big step and it equals a forty percent efficiency improvement. Thicker wall and roof assemblies are typical to get to step four. Of course, to hold more insulation, glazing is typically of a triple pane variety. We don't see that a lot in in the TNRD so far, but I've seen triple pane windows installed in some homes in Tobiano. Orientation of a home towards the sun to take advantage of solar heat gains in winter is also a design parameter. That isn't typically incorporated in the lower levels, but in step four, it's going to have to be looked at in order to achieve that target. Step five, well, that's. That's Hallelujahville for twenty thirty two. At this stage, we've reached the supposed zenith of building design, net zero readiness. At this point, we're estimated to be eighty percent more efficient than current construction. And we'll be ready to plug in solar, wind and geothermal energy generation sources on site. Creating as much or more power than what is consumed on an annual basis. That's a lofty target, but that's what both the feds and the province have committed to in the climate action plans that are out there. To get us there with new housing. Okay, and over to Regina.
This is, bear with us while we give you a bit of background. So the building code historically has been prescriptive. Similar to the plumbing code and the electrical code, the national building code and the typical cold codes in other provinces are also prescriptive. They're less performance based, and this is a continuum. Now, I'm going to give you some examples. So under the prescriptive code, you must meet or beat X amount of R value in walls or in ceilings. You have a maximum. Stair run, you might have a, you're required to have. A certain mechanical ventilation in certain and heating. To achieve a occupancy permit, you have a window U value. Set, but there isn't anything that tells you, you know, you're not allowed more than ten or twenty percent window area. There's nothing, the only windows that are governed are exit windows for bedrooms. So you need sprinklers and exit window or an exit door. The a prescriptive code is predictable and ascertainable, but it gives you less flexibility and choice. On how to get to wherever the objective is. So as per the steps, the objectives are to become relatively. And it's relative to the current code. I know you, the chair, you had asked ten, twenty, forty percent relative to what? Relative to what we are enforcing now. And as Tony said, that's, we're at the limited requirement. That's also the case for all the municipalities that we do building inspection for. So. We will be sharing this with your CAOs, the municipalities we do building permitting for. And as I said, Litton is bravely going ahead and is it step four or step five, your your? Three. Okay, sorry, I thought it was higher than that. They're working on a bylaw that they are in the process, but it is not yet adopted. Now, a performance code, and here's an example. As per the steps, they target emissions. They don't tell you how you're going to achieve it, but you're. And that's where the certified energy advisor is and reviews it. So there's the, you might. Performance might say we want to limit heat loss through roofs. So you really shouldn't consider black roofs with asphalt like they have in Tobiano, that is the building scheme. Instead, you might want a reflective roof that lowers your AC load in summer. Also, performance code, it would look at, are you using a hot water tank or an on demand system? Are you using a natural gas or oil furnace or using geothermal heat pump or air to air heat pump? So with. A performance code. It does, to get where the the province is going, this is what they have opted for rather than to go prescriptive. They are going performance. So it presents people with choice and options. But it shifts responsibility to, from the regulator to a consultant and all that that comes with that. So it requires a broker to administer the process and hence the complexity, the added cost and some of our challenges. So. Requiring less windows and smaller windows and better windows is hard to, from an energy efficiency standpoint, may be difficult to argue with.
I'm sorry, should I just enjoy them having trouble hearing it?
You can silence them, I think. Turn off their mic. So the two images from are from the provincial manual. There's nothing in the building code that requires you to plant deciduous trees along the south of your house. To protect you from heat gain in the summer, and those trees are one point five meters away from the edge of the building. And then in the winter, when the leaves are down, you're going to get solar gain. There's an example of performance and not prescription. And again, we are, we are the only province that we know of going this way. And we've checked the national building code, which usually sets the target. So BC is in a bit of a unique situation here. Building codes typically are prescriptive and not performance. So let's talk a little bit about energy advisors. And I believe today we checked and there's three in the city of Kamloops, based in the city of Kamloops. I don't know of any others in the TNRD. When we first looked at this, when this was introduced quite a few years back, we spent half a day with an energy advisor from Vernon or Kelowna. Who showed us exactly what they do and how they do it. So they are federally, so National Resources Canada licenses them, certifies them. They can be part of a company or they can be an owner operator working from his or her home. They just need the equipment, the certification, the, and they charge a fee for service, which is, of course, reflected by market demand. And covers their time, their insurance, all their equipment, their travel. And what they do is they create, they take the design of a building these days, as Tony said, it's most like, most often a house, a part nine house. And they put it into a computer model and they simulate it based on everything. What kind of wall assembly, what kind of insulation, is there rigid outside, then studs and then bat? Where the windows are, how big the windows are, are they double pane, triple pane, what have you? Then the 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 model, and it's they all, I believe, use the same software, comes out. And I'll show you what it looks like when they, it comes out with a spits out a analysis of what step you're achieving or not. Then they go and provide advice like, gee, you should get rid of your. Gas stove and put in a convection stove. You need a deeper overhang to the east and west and south if you want those big windows. Then they also ground truth what happens by traveling to the construction site, usually twice. And Tony will explain why twice to do the blower door test. Now they also look at existing buildings because as you're aware, there's a whole lot of existing buildings that may not have the. High efficiency furnace or proper insulation. So they also audit and review energy efficiency programs that higher level levels of government have to improve those systems. And we do those through our gas tax funding often for community halls and what have you. So what is modeling? Kind of went over it. They look at it in a three D manner. So they will look at, if you've got a well insulated. Rectilinear house without a lot of jigs and jogs and corners and overhangs. And roof areas, it will be more efficient. So this is the report that they spit out. So just, this is a actual report. I cut off the names. And so this was to achieve a step two. Right there, to achieve the, by the model that they've created, that would be twelve percent more efficient than base code. Then they look at all the, so you can see that the blue is as proposed. And then the green is what they recommend changing. So in this case, the house has R twenty fat. It uses two by sixes, and then it also has rigid insulation on the outside, which is pretty expensive, say. Then the the requirements to meet that step, you can see some of the changes. So for example, they will, they recommend going from R twenty to R twenty four in the garage. And then the airtightness is measured, so they have to achieve. What what's proposed and what they must achieve. Then this again is not, this is just step two, it's not three or four. That would become more stringent down the line than the window analysis. Now, this is worth spending a bit of time with because this is the big one as as you, on the cover of your brochure there, the photo, it's the windows. You know, throwing all the insulation at the wall, we we broker it now, but we don't look at air window area. Because we don't have that this sort of analysis in the TNRD and in our small member municipalities. All the insulation in the wall isn't going to make a big difference if you have big picture windows facing south with no overhang or east and west, particularly west for evening sun. So this looks at the size of windows. In this case, the window analysis, it's double pane because there's only one space. It's filled with argon, which helps. Then the U factor, which is the insulative property of the of the glass, the solar heat gain. That's where they would look at, you know, is the is the glass reflective, the VT is visible transmission, I believe. So they might tell you, you have too many windows. They usually wouldn't tell you, you don't have enough. So. Let's, this is yours now. We're going to talk a little bit about the mechanics of it.
So how do we prove that all of these efforts at improving air tightness and reducing uncontrolled air leakage were effective? The blower door test is the answer. When a certified energy advisor sets up their equipment to measure air leakage. They induce a negative pressure to a preset baseline of fifty pascals. An outside air attempts to infiltrate the building envelope to equalize the pressure differential as compared with the outdoors. Their equipment measures. Their equipment measures the rate at which that's happening. And they sometimes use handheld smoke generators to walk around the, the building and see where the incoming air is trying to rush in. And it's typically around doors and window frames. Uh, other places where that might happen are at framing intersections, um, any kind of equipment, um, mechanical equipment, inlets and outlets. So they have an opportunity to identify exactly where the air loss is happening in a home. When they finish their test, pass or fail determines whether more work in a follow-up test are required or not. That could be the second trip out to a, to a residence being constructed in outline areas. That's going to cost, and we'll get into that later, another sum of money. So the envelope is like a balloon with no pinholes. It's getting tighter and tighter and it triggers requirements to introduce air into the building envelope that is healthy, controlled air into the home. Uh, if you think about past practice, our homes were fairly leaky. There were benefits to that, believe it or not. It wasn't thermal efficiency that was a benefit, but it was the fact that there was at least some air transfer happening uh, in an uncontrolled way that didn't uh, initiate mold or other properties of having too tight of an envelope and not having enough ventilation. So things have moved a little forward from a few experiments. The R2000 homes of the past were very tight, but didn't seem to have the accompanying ventilation provided. So they found many problems with them with mold in assemblies and they abandoned that standard. Uh, and come back to it later on, here we are. Uh, but by improving ventilation. The cost for blower door tests will be looked at in a few slides from now. But by leaving a blower door test to the one required inspection uh, by a CEA to, to test your uh, accomplishment there of air tight home, you end up with a, a last chance um, scenario. Either you conform to the air tightness requirement at final, drywall's on. Uh, everything is finished and you find out that you fail, you're going to have a problem fixing that. Um, and when you, when it becomes a mandatory requirement to go to a step level, there is no wiggle room. This is something you got to fix before you're going to get a pass and uh, and occupancy and final on your home. So uh, the typical scenario is that uh, the CEA would recommend to come twice. One at the uh, at the vapor barrier inspection. So insulated vapor barrier, but before any finishes are gone on the wall, that'd be the time to come and do the test. See if it's uh, see what they need to fix and do that before finishing the rest of the home. So two trips is uh, is a likely scenario. And if you fail uh, that, then each trip is going to cost you in the neighborhood of, well, we'll get into that, thousands of dollars. Here's an example of the kind of construction that you expect to see when you're trying to achieve a step three. You've got a combination of poly vapor barrier there where the partition wall, the interior partition wall meets the exterior wall. And that's to seal up the framing at that intersection. You've got spray foam in the stud cavity. It's a medium density spray foam that is also a vapor barrier. So it fills that cavity, provides more insulation than what a uh, a bat can achieve uh, per inch. And it's also the vapor barrier, as I said. The other stuff that you'll see there is that black acoustic sealant that everyone loves so much. In fact, uh, it's often referred to as black death. It's not because it's toxic, it's just that it gets everywhere. It's stringy. Anyone that's used it knows it's not fun. WD-40 actually removes it pretty good if you get it on you. Unfortunately, that's not great for clothes. So that's what, what a blower door test would look for. And um, let's move along here to the ventilation requirement, which comes along hand in hand with creating this really tight envelope. Now we have to introduce fresh air. Uh, we have to mix it with uh, the air that we have in our home currently and are needing to exhaust to balance the equation. The most common uh, way of providing that is with the heat recovery ventilator or HRV. But these devices do, they uh, they scavenge that heat component off of exhaust air. And before it goes outside, they run it in a passage that is parallel with, with air that's coming in. So let's think of it easiest in the winter when you got cold air outside and you're needing to pump that in to introduce fresh air. If it comes in at minus 30 uh, and is then uh, expected to uh, be introduced into specific rooms like bedrooms and living rooms, that air is going to be noticeably cold. So the HRV uh, attempts to temper that air coming in by running some of the already heated or conditioned air, pass that in passages in that little box there. It's uh, it's hard to believe, it's kind of um, a very simple unit with low maintenance, other than the fan, which is running uh, at predetermined sort of intervals. It doesn't necessarily need to run full time to achieve its goal of air changes per hour. But it's uh, it doesn't take up a lot of space either. It goes in a mechanical room. At this time, HRVs are not automatically required to be installed in a prescriptive built home. Um, because other uh, means of exchanging air are there with forced air furnaces in combination with bathroom exhaust fans, for instance. One is bringing in supply air, the other is exhausting it. And that's, that's what we're doing currently. But at this time in the BC building code, if you do install an HRV, you get a credit towards the insulation requirements because you're actually doing something proactive to save some of the heat and the energy required to produce that. The minimum starting point for purchasing an HRV unit is uh, per local suppliers, about $2,000 plus installation for a modest size of home. Um, they go up from that to, I heard 7,000 recently, uh, yesterday from a local builder who installed one in a house in Tobiano, was a $7,000 extra cost to install an HRV in a more moderate sized home. I would say 3,000 square feet, I think, is what he indicated. So they're, they're not cheap, but they are actually good value for the money. All right. So this slide is, I don't know if it's um, all it really depicts is that we have different climate zones in different parts of BC. And that's, that's common sense. You've got areas in the interior that have more days where they're colder temperatures than you do in uh, more moderate zone. Zone four is down in the lower mainland. Um, even currently, you're allowed to use passive ventilation in the climate zone four, which consists of just air, uh, air inlets in bedrooms. Uh, so a vent direct outdoors, that's the kind of uh, um, lower threshold uh, that's allowed currently. But once you get into climate zone five, Kamloops and climate zone five, much of the TNRD is ashcraft cashcrete. Um, those areas in the southern part of our regional district are in climate zone five. And as you go north, predictably, there are more days where it's below 18 degrees Celsius, which is their measure as to uh, to come up with this number, the heating degree days. One thing I'll just point out is that the um, the climate zones are, they don't go away. The um, they trigger higher requirements for insulation as you go north. It ends up being that uh, the climate zone is an input into a certified energy advisor's building modeling. And uh, I have yet to really fully comprehend how um, a step code level five home could be built in Fort Nelson or other areas far north that also have the penalty of being in a colder climate. So to achieve net zero there, it's going to be a challenge. I think a lot of uh, of the conception is that in climate zone four, where most people live in BC, it's not a problem. Some would wonder about wood stoves, solid fuel appliances. They're considered as a supplementary heat source in the lower levels of step code. They're not counted as being the primary heat source. Um, they wouldn't fly that way. They would need to be supplemented with other heat that is uh, provided in the proposed house. Nevertheless, uh, in outlying areas and rural areas, uh, dependence on electricity is, is hard to imagine. Uh, solo dependence on electricity, uh, heat pumps that are advertised on BC Hydro's ads on TV. Uh, they sound great. Uh, we're not hearing good things about how they perform in the coldest time of year in northern parts and interior parts of the province. Um, Kamloops builders have shared that information that even just this last winter, with a heat pump installed and, and 100% reliance on that system, that we had a few uh, periods where we were at 25 below, um, where that was not sufficient heat that the tenants in the occupied buildings could only get to about 14 degrees Celsius in the interior of that uh, brand new structure. So they weren't too happy about it. And uh, so you'd always advise if you're going to have uh, a heat pump, to have a supplementary heat to that. So another system, again, um, the local builder indicated that uh, all further developments that they would always install extra electric uh, baseboards and forced uh, fan heaters in bathrooms and the like to supplement at the coldest time of year to avoid that scenario of, of being uh, short in capability. Uh, in the upper levels of step code, greenhouse gas emissions are considered. So wood burning appliances could need to be eliminated entirely to achieve the targets, at least until final occupancy is secured. And that's the human element. So what are the added costs? This is a, is hard to pinpoint, it's variable from size of home to uh, climate zone, et cetera. But I, I consulted a local energy advisor and uh, she would share with me the cost structure that she uses. It's broken down, if you see there, by blower door test, by modeling and then later by material and labor costs um, to achieve a level. This is for step three in the TNRD. Um, these sort of ranges uh, don't depict what the cost could be for all parts of TNRD. Obviously, you got travel to Blue River or other parts of TNRD where it's going to exceed these numbers. But the sort of total package, 14 to $25,000 is expected uh, cost uh, to conform to step three of the uh, BC step code. The CHBACI or the Canadian Home Builders Association located in Kamloops is a source of the numbers in this slide. The base model, they use a home to be constructed in the Juniper area. And this is a, a little bit of an older slide, 2018, I think their presentation uh, showed these numbers. As you can see, their numbers are fairly similar to the ranges we found from the, from the most recently consulted energy advisor, 14 to 25,000, if you look at step three. Step four and five, however, they had a significant cost increase. Even in Kamloops, where there are certified energy advisors available and building material suppliers right on the doorstep. All in all, cost to hire certified energy advisors appear to account for about a half of the material costs, a third to a half. But together, they increase new building costs significantly. The additional burden to interior communities that already pay more for materials than do their counterparts in urban settings is predictably going to increase the cost of buildings.
Okay, that's two more slides here, uh, just to wrap it up. So the, we might sound a bit critical, but this isn't going away. Um, the expectation is that we will build more efficiently. Um, the, the sort of perception that um, we must do everything we can to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And uh, buildings are a large component of, of that, that, that in vehicles, of course, for climate change. So this isn't that we, that if, if um, the folks who attend Silga and then on to UBCM just outright oppose this, or it's not going to go away. The province is well down the path, a lot of, more so in the lower mainland and on the southern parts of the island. A lot of communities have already either required step three or two, or they have provided um, incentives. So for example, if you meet step two, your building permit is going to be discounted 25%. If you meet step three, you'll get it for half price. That, so they're doing, they're trying a carrot approach as well. Um, so our purpose here is to give you the information. Um, this will arise, this will absolutely be more challenging the further north you go and the more rural you go, or smaller isolated municipalities where there is no energy advisors. So that is our concern. So I think that more will be achieved going, this is New Zealand. Um, more will be achieved if, if, if it is the will, the political will to provide some more, that, to ask the province for a different approach or more than one approach. That's what we're here for. Um, our challenges are, A, like, nobody wants to pay more for utility bills. Um, if you build your own house and you're going to live in it for your whole life, you're really going to look at that. You're going to look at whi- which ways north, which way the sun goes, where are the trees, which way is the wind? The more, in the more urban context where the, the subdivision layout limits your options. But at least there's um, more profesh- professionals. So whether that's structural engineers or um, uh, community energy advisors, it can be easier to build in a more populous place. So we've got the, the challenges of geography, travel. The only CAO, CEAs we know of are in Kamloops. Um, we don't know how far, whether they're willing to travel to Blue River to look at a small bungalow. Um, it also, in other countries, like you, you need an engineer and you need an architect. You need this to begin with. In BC, a homeowner can still build their own house legally, but illegally, unlawfully, they can do it, of course. But like, they could do it legally, but the amount of um, challenges both from the homeowner protection office and the building code and what have you, they are, they are not, uh, they're surmountable, but they are not insignificant. It's certainly for us, for our staff, it absolutely complicates the building process because we become the regulatory body that controls and brokers also completely, folks don't get their occupancy permit till the CEA has proved they're at whatever step. Um, the timber and log home industry has been very challenged by this. It's very hard to meet even the current um, the, the current uh, what we follow, which is the base without the CEA. So we, you need a CEA for a log home and you'll end up doing something crazy like small windows and R100 insulation in the attic to try to get to that balance. Um, so a lot in the rural areas, we're seeing more and more manufactured homes because it really, it's the only, they can't get contractors out, they can't get um, the engineers out. They can't find a certified, a contractor that's accredited under the HP, a homeowner protection act. Um, and off-grid locations um, have other challenges in terms of the electric, whether it's electrical grid or propane appliances in a tank. So those are our challenges. So I want to look, just give, leave three and they're in your little booklet, what we think might be viable alternatives or arguments to put to the province to look at it in other ways. So one is just recognize where most construction occurs. The municipality is that it's, it's not necessarily fair that in one jurisdiction, you must meet step code three. You must meet step code three. But if you cross that line in Barnhart Vale or where have you there, it isn't there. But most construction happens in urban areas and particularly in the lower mainland. So Kamloops, Kelowna, what have you in the lower mainland, not up north, but this, don't forget the same rules of. Legislation applies everywhere in the province. So second. Look at. The default where somebody could, you know, instead of spending the money on a. Bringing up consultants to do a blower door test or all the modeling, they agree that's it. I'm just going to do. Our one hundred or our sixty walls and look at it another way. So offer them the option if they'd like, just to follow a more stringent prescription rather than the performance. Especially especially in remote areas. Our third option is. Right now, the way it's structured. Yes, you do get punished for more windows. Or more a more articulated building. But. And this, I believe, the speaker next week at Silga will talk about affordable housing and. You know, if it's it's a row house, it's easier to meet the step code in a row house, so much easier and much less expensive. And often row hoses are in urban areas. But if you've got a rural or a remote or a small modest. How say a thousand square feet? They, in my mind, I don't think they should be held to the standard of a fourth four thousand square foot high end home. I don't know if that would fly with the province, but. I it's it's also worth mentioning, I don't know what the energy standards for manufactured homes are, but they typically. You could have a customized manufactured home that exceeds all this, but most standard. The ones we bill building permit here have less insulation. Than a stick built home, especially from below if they're not on a fully insulated basement. The roofs, the attic spaces are much smaller. So. You know, maybe there should be a similar standard like that for stick built homes in remote areas where there are no. Energy advisors within X number of kilometers or under X amount of square feet. So that is. Those are three ideas that I think are all defensible. When this goes through. This can be something that can be a bit of a rift between rural areas and incorporated areas, but bear in mind that said, there's lots of incorporated areas. That are remote in British Columbia. But unless that there's a kind of cohesion. Between. City folks and country folks, it's probably not going to go anywhere. At U B C M. So again, what's next? Silga is next week. We believe this is going to be raised. And again, the province's literature from about three or four years ago. At that point, it forecast that step three would be mandatory, as we explained it today, mandatory across the province sometime in twenty twenty two. We haven't heard anything yet. So it's kind of makes me wonder what's going on. We don't have that date when in twenty twenty two. And the building standards branch, which is now under the Ministry of Attorney General, it moved from municipal affairs, has been quiet on it. So I guess if there's going to be any appetite. To take this to U B C M, the only hope would be for some sort of a unified. Approach then. Otherwise, I don't think if if there's if there's a isn't. Consensus, the province isn't going to necessarily change what they're doing. Oops. And. I think it would need to be constructive lobby. It's not going away. That's it. So I don't know if you have, I know we might be wrong. It's already after eleven and Vicki, I think that was short of time. So. You have the little brochure. If you have any questions, you could just contact perhaps Tony and I if that's okay through the chair.
Yeah, I think that would be preferable. We have one more presentation in this meeting and we probably have to take a break at this point. So. Thank you ever so much for bringing that to us. I think. I'm certainly not looking forward to another construction project. That's for sure. We're not going to do questions directly. Miss Adilkova has invited you to bring them directly to her or to Tony.
Which her goes, she's she's asking for us to actually do a lobby at Soga next weekend. I'm I'm a little, I'm a little, I want to just put some more information on the table because I think it's 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 there's some information there that. It's missing from the presentation that I wanted to provide, but I mean, I can do that. Like this is some of this next week. And we're being asked to sort of like go it out, give some information out. I appreciate staff support, but I did do some other. Looking around, I wanted to share with the board because I think it's important to have this context that I have. A little bit on this because it's it's one, it's not one sided. It's a sad perspective. So I wanted to spend two minutes. Just talking about a few things here. Okay, by all means, then, but. I'll be very quick, but I mean, I think I I think that there is a. So number one. Mike's on. So number one is that there has been work done on subclear rural areas to this community association, much more staff's aware of that. Secondly, I think that there is. There is definitely a rural challenge here, but I think we have to think about. Which one of these you want to kind of talk about? And I would prefer to go prescriptive as opposed to not saying that's your standard or whatever. I think that the. Through the Community Energy Association, which both. Director Blackwell and myself are involved with, I match on the board of incoming chair. There's a lot of information through there through the step code council that we could bring to this conversation. And I'm not sure if staffs actually have the benefit of that information provided to them because they're talking to industry folk, which is obviously fine. But the whole government conversation is is absent from the staff report on this at this point. And that to me is a deficiency for us to go to Soga on this. I would be really careful, Soga. About making any strong statements, but I'd ask questions and then maybe come back with staff after with a kind of a lobby for the U B C M because this is not to me. And with all due respect, not the full picture.
Okay, thanks very much. We'll now break until. What's Miss Weller? How long is your presentation? Okay, we don't want you to shorten it, Ms. Weller, but I'm just wondering if we break until eleven twenty. That'll give you lots of time between then and noon. Perfect. We're going to resume, ladies and gentlemen, with with a presentation from Ms. Weller regarding the motion picture studio. And. I can only say that I'm anxiously anticipating this presentation. I think the. The addition of a studio in our regional district could be a fabulous thing.
How's that? Good?
That's better.
Hey, now you can hear me. And then I have a after we I do have one. I actually have a closing story to tell you after the presentation and we're finished. So here we go. So let's start where we left off the last time I presented to you, and I'm just going to give you the facts. I'm not going to explain too much. We had a great few years. We've attracted productions that are U S productions and M O Ws. Now, those are the smaller, what we call the romantic movies. They only filmed for twelve days. And when they're here and you see them out here, we've had two some so far, met with the producer the other day. She says we drop. Minimum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per production. And then it goes beyond that. We have a commitment so far for five this year in our area, and she says there might go up to seven. And our workforce is developing, so we're in good shape. And what's really nice is the U S market is coming back. Since COVID, they've been away. That's your Jurassic Worlds, you're the stands, those big, big fat sexy ones that make my pupils go to dollar signs. And they like our landscapes in our small towns, whereas the M O Ws tend to stay in Kamloops because they can't move around a lot. They just don't have the money for the total overall budget. So what we've done so far about a studio is we were allotted thirty five thousand dollars and we spent thirty one five hundred for the studio study. Conclusions were it's good for the T N R D. There's demand worldwide in for space. The configuration that they thought was best was two stages, large, large ones, combined two mill stages that could double up as carpentry shops. On five acres. That's what we need. And the business case based. They presented a business case based on bricks and mortar, not including land development and the price of land. Whoop. So the studio subcommittee got together. And we came up with the following. We thought, well, we got to start thinking of land and water, which of course, you know, goes pretty much over my head. But we're thinking for investors and developers, where exactly are the best sites? They're going to ask, well, what's the advantage of this site over that? What's the challenge of that site? And can any of the obstacles be mitigated? So how will land development and purchase estimates and other considerations factor into the overall budget of having a studio here? And potential profits. And we already have that just with the studio, but not considering the land. So we we went our separate ways and we each had our task, got went and he consulted some experts for some opinions. Jim Anderson from Venture Kamloops, he related to us what best practices and gave us some education and best practices and in looking at what we should look like. Jake, wow, he consulted with the city. He consulted with expert companies about what we should do. Talked to Doug about, well, if we need more money, would we get it? There's some economic development money, what do we think? And what did I do? I'll tell you what I did. I sat around and read. So I came up with here Canada's content boom sparks a race for shooting space. The global demand is high, so I'm scouring all the headlines to figure it out. There's going to be a massive stage in Vancouver. Another one is Deadline Hollywood. The above one was from the Hollywood Reporter. And the one from Dateline, which I subscribe to Ireland's building something and Toronto might have a great big studio as well. So we seem to be in and in the. Right timing. People are thinking like we're thinking. And then the latest one from Global is Billion Dollar Movies Return Signaling Shift in Studio Streaming Strategy. We like that. We do well with big American big blockbusters because they've gone away. Over COVID. So now they're coming back. So that's good news to us. And then I thought, well, what's happening on another scale outside? And it looks like the Thompson Obanogan is one of the few regions that we're getting population because workforce development. Is huge in all areas of all sectors. So we still keep going there with education and workshops and courses and workforce development. But remember, I talked about these M O Ws that we've got five to seven, they're training, they're taking new people and giving them on the ground training. They're not getting the best, you know, great money for what they're doing. But we have this little incubation of crew going on, which is really, really benefits us looking forward. So then Jake had a brainstorm and sent this to me and it just made my mind go mental. Says need a minimum five. What about the subdivision potential? What about existing zoning? What about covenants and easements and right of ways? What about official community plants? We got to worry about the airports and proximity and noise. When we select somewhere, what about the railway? Should we be near them? We need to be near proximity of hotels, restaurants and others and A L R considerations and limitations. We got to worry about the topography when we look at sites that flat or regading, do we mean retaining? What about flood plains and consideration? What about archaeological considerations? Then we have local access and Modi and ease of ease of access in terms of proximity to highway corridors. Water servicing, fire flow, sanitary, utility, power. Am I, this is way out of my bailiwick, but this is all stuff that if somebody is going to ask us developers and investors. We got to have answers for. Oh, not to mention in internet site drainage, environmental fresh previous land development cost, yada, yada, yada. You get it. So. Solid waste, ease of access. So you know, it just it just made my mind mental. I didn't even know you think about this stuff. So we met again this time on Zoom. What do we want to do? Because this, this is a good list. We've listened to the experts. What's the bottom line? Experts in engineering, planning and economic development have suggested that we select five or six properties. Maybe five, do a high elevate, high level evaluation of each and target two, maybe three properties and deep dive. And something we can present to the developers and investor investors for reliable outcomes. So we came up with six ideas of potential based on talking to experts, talking to the city. Conferring amongst ourselves, talking to other stakeholders. We came up with six potential sites. And bottom line, it's believed that a budget of thirty five thousand will be sufficient for an engineer planning firm to produce a site selection study. That will provide enough information for the Film Commission, Venture Kamloops and any other economic or private investor or others to seek investors and developers. And that the study will provide enough information for serious consideration of building a motion picture studio in the region. So from an economic growth, I had a rough conversation. Doug was on the conversations. Well, we do have an envelope of economic development money. Could maybe draw this thirty five thousand to fund the study. It certainly can't come out of the Film Commission budget we have. And after this is complete. The site selection study would be released along with the Nordicity feasibility study to the public. It's out of our hands. It's up to the market to decide whether they film here or whatever, but at least we have. Good two studies. We've done our homework and our due diligence and. Go where they want to go. Whoop. So that's that's kind of where I'm at, where we're at as a subcommittee. And if there's add appetite, at this point, there's no, you know, private partner, whatever that's. We haven't even gone there or looked there. This is strictly to get new investment into the region.
So Ms. Weller, I'm going to open it up for questions and discussion as you. Suggest, but my first question for you is, are you, are you hoping that we will move today as a committee of the whole to. Ask the board for thirty five thousand dollars from Act Dev to proceed with the study?
Yeah, I think that's the next move. Otherwise, when you go to investors and developers, they're going to say, well, where? And then they're going to have to say, well, why this and why that area, not this area? And we won't have the answers. And it'll just be, yeah, okay, well, you know, Kamloops, is that near Kelowna? You know, I think that's what you're going to get.
So did somebody care to make that motion?
Make that motion.
Move in second and so now we're open for discussion. Director Schaefer.
I'd just like to ask you to then after it goes to the public. Are you talking about the investor public or just the public?
Absolutely, anybody who wants any of our studies whatsoever. Any investors have already had people who own hotels. Ask me about what reports, what do we think, where we're going with this? Everybody can have absolute anything they want to even go and propose and say, I have private property. Why not here? They can go for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Singh.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Is this your last presentation with the board or?
I think so. I don't know, we'll see. Yeah.
My goodness, long run. Well, a couple of questions. One is, are you able to issue who's on your, on the committee? Number one. And number two is, I'm always wondering about what the right balance is to me like. So there should be obviously a time when the private sector picks this up. And I'm not sure where that line is in terms of like, have we done enough now not to do the study ourselves? Why would we want to do a study? Is, what's a public, private kind of like balance in terms of like, you know, this question Dr. Rain often comes up with as well around kind of what the actual, you know, sort of balance of, of the work we need to do to kind of get ready? Because we don't want to do work the private investors are going to pay for anyways. If we want to kind of do this work, we need to do to kind of get it set up. Those kind of questions I have.
And the first one, oh, who's on the committee? Scott, Jake, Jake is had, help me with titles.
I'm General Manager of Operations.
Jake, Doug Ray to ask the questions and myself and Jim Anderson from Venture Kamloops. Well, this gets to where is it best? Because you could look at Kamloops and there's so many places that might have sewer stuff that can be mitigated or that's near a well, or this is a good place. And people say, well, why not this place? This gives them a rudimentary overlay of all the areas we think are feasible as opposed to going. And we're not doing their job for them. Because if we say, yes, this is a good corridor. This is where you have to talk to Modi. This is what they've said so far. And then it becomes, okay, well, this is what we want to do. What's the cost of it out? We don't get too much into the weeds in that respect. But we do need to identify what are the challenges and the advantages of some parcels of property that we think are good. Now, if they decide, say a investor says, well, these are good, but I would prefer to build, you know, in the southwest section of the industrial section, say up in Levalle, I'm going to take this building, tear it down and all that. You've got all that information. You've got the sewer information, the flood, the fire flows, all those big words of easements and stuff. We've got that. But we're looking at land that will probably be developed. So it's a different perspective. So we're doing it rudimentary and then they've got to take it over. They got to spend the money, but at least they can do a site selection. And then spend the money to really drill down and see if they can make it happen.
Well, let me thank you very much for that. And also when I asked you yesterday whether you might run for the board on your retirement, you didn't say no. So I was kind of excited by that prospect as well.
I don't know. I don't know if you can afford me. It's always hard that way, isn't it?
Director Quinn.
Thank you. Thank you for presentation, Vicky. And I would support a motion to do the study for number that was talked about. Part of my rationale for that is that after we began this discussion, I actually spent some time watching the movies I do and sat through the credits. And it is amazing, the numbers of people that are involved in the film. And each one of those names is a job. And so I think it might be, it certainly is not a bad idea to do some more in-depth investigation, just as Ms. Waller has presented. So I would support that notion. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Quinn. Director Brown.
I even heard what a dolly grip and a boy grip was.
Well, you could, you could explain that to, you could explain that to me off camera. Director Brown.
Thanks, Director Gillis, Chair Gillis.
Excuse me, Director Schaefer, your microphone, please. Thank you.
I'm, I understand that we need a film society here. And I understand all the good parts to why we want to do all of this. I'm worried that we put into the money, the money into all this investigating of a certain spot. And then it gets sold to somebody else. And then what? Some other investor comes along with a beer making factory and no more film industry. That's, that's the downside to doing all of this work ahead of time. And I don't know what the other answer is. Maybe it's we have a few eyes on property and we do some of the work at that moment. But I'm worried that if we do it ahead of time, there's too many other things that could happen to that property. And it could be a waste of money.
I get what you're saying. I totally understand. But this is in the context of what this particular business model is. If we say this is a great site to build a film studio, well, it's in an industrial area. And yeah, maybe it is a great site to build a brewery too, but the market will, will out. And that's why we've chosen six sites. Ones on private properties, matter of fact. So, you know, just in general terms. So it really does, I can't control that, but I certainly, they'll want to know the same thing. In fact, Venture Kamloops just was able to get some money and some mankind. And they did that for the airport corridor. So that's one of the sites that we thought, yeah, the studies, you know, we can piggyback on that side. So maybe there might be a hotel looking at to it. And there's a film studio says, no, we want to build there. We got the cash here it is. That can happen anywhere. But I met with the studios and I said, would you consider when, if we sell this first and we say, oh, you want to film in our area? And then we go, okay, we'll build a studio for you. They said, no, we won't do that business model. We are too erratic when we want it, we need it. When I talked to people down in Vancouver, they said that CW, which is a studios that have booked all the studios. And so people are forcing to book into warehouses, equestrian centers and all that to film and to film for others. That just tells me that, yeah, it could get scooped up, but it's through our eyes and our water usage, not a brewery's usage. Their water demand's going to be different. Our internet demand's going to be way different than possibly a brewery. So we have the different eyes. It's through our context, not through theirs.
Thanks.
Thank you, Director Rain.
Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I, I do appreciate the enthusiasm. This is a major, major commitment. The TNRD making a decision on, on a big business plan. But I was just sorry, I have not seen feasibility business, an independent feasibility and business case study that really would warrant us concluding that this will work. I mean, the great enthusiasm, but even it's frightening. I see the, 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 the amount of money that's being invested in, in some of these cities and everything scares me to the point of saying, everybody's jumping in. That's probably not the time to be jumping in. But we need to have an independent feasibility business case study before we start treading around planning what we're going to do. I don't know that we know that this will really work and that it will be not a sinkhole for money. I would be opposed to doing this without seeing the business case study, an independent one.
Ms. Waller.
Yeah, we did one. That was the Nordicity report that said it would work. That was presented to the board, I think, a month or two ago, three maybe. And it was based on a business case and the business case was there. And it actually included the figures of how much occupancy would have to be in order to break even and start making money. So we do have that. And it was based on a business case model. So that's why we say we want to release the entire report. Whereas to the board, we just released a little bit of it because of public, we didn't feel it was quite ready.
Thank you. I have, I think, Mr. Devlin and Director Rothenberger and Director Laird. Director, Mr. Devlin, did you wish to speak to the matter?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gillis. Just, I just wanted to add a point of clarification that the areas that were discussed at the, at the working group or subcommittee, these were not individual properties per se. These were pockets or areas within the city. And so the intent isn't to have this site evaluation, identify one particular single property. It's more of a comparison of the different pockets in terms of how they would rank in looking at all those important variables that a developer would like to consider. Obviously there, if a developer, I see this as, as an encouragement mechanism for the private sector to, to do a much deeper dive in terms of both feasibility from an economic perspective and the final, you know, an area specific, getting down to the individual parcel selection. So I just wanted to add that bit of clarification.
Thank you so much. Director Rothenberger.
Vicky, what year did you start?
2000.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Cause I, I remember it was, it was, I think shortly, which I like to take credit for, as you know, because I was on the hiring committee.
Absolutely. And I paid you well.
It was a year, year or so before that, I think. So probably going on a close to a couple of dozen years that the TNRD commissioned an independent consultant to look at the prospects for the industry. And the title of that report that came back was damn the torpedoes full speed ahead.
Right.
And, and the message there was, if you're going to get into that industry, it's the kind of thing where you can't kind of mess around the edges and, you know, be overly cautious about it. Because if you do that, you're not going to get the benefit and you're just going to lose. It's, it's one of those things you have to be bold about. And so I think it's one of those times probably when we need to be bold and we have to commit to it and go ahead with it and, and find all the information we need and push ahead with it and be committed to it as something we want to shoot for, whether or not we get there. But we can't kind of be, be too careful and, and, you know, too cautious and worry about spending $30,000, $35,000, whatever. And we simply had to do for it, go for it. So I'm, I'm just saying I'm in support of pushing ahead. Damn.
Thank you, Director Rothenberger. Director Laird.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments are similar to Director Rothenberger. I remember when the Film Commission was presented and, and it was, as Mel says, it was, are we doing it? Are we not? But when you look and see where we started and all the work that Vicky's put into it, if it wasn't a successful opportunity, she's put to the point where there is a further opportunity for employment. And it wouldn't have happened with, if the board hadn't made that decision to go forward with the Film Commission. And now we're at the next step. So I support the next direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Director Singh, just going to remark about how old Director Laird, Director Rothenberger are.
One, just one other thing, just to add to the mix. When I moved back here in 95, the sentiment was, all we need is a studio to satisfy, to, to solve our problems. We need a studio, we need a studio. And it's still going on. We need a studio, we need a studio. You know what? That's almost 30 years or whatever later. And I think by doing like, as Jake phrased it, sort of a broad strokes, I think it leaves it up to the market of the people who know the business and are willing to put their money in. They'll tell us if it's going to work or not, not us. We can only support saying, yeah, we think it's a good idea and let the market decide. And I, I believe the market will say yes. And I think we should look at it, but it will certainly, hopefully not last. If we don't do something like this, another 30 years going, I wonder if we should have built a studio. Like a sign. Like a sign.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. I bring this to the moment of truth. There's a motion on the floor that we, that we approve $35,000 from our Economic Development Fund. That has been, that, yeah, that, that we recommend to the board, that they, that the board approves. So all in favor? Is anyone opposed? I see Director Rain. I see none other. That's Carrie. That brings us to the item number. Oh, you're not done yet? Oh.
Yeah, I got a story too. Bill C11 is a federal bill that has its first reading. And it is a bill suggesting that streamers and social media like TikTok, Facebook, that they've come under our regulations that there should be more Canadian content. Right now, the streamers like Amazon, Netflix, Hulu, they, Disney Plus get, when they produce in Canada, they get a 16% tax credit on labor. But they are not under any agreement to provide Canadian content. So there is a bill put forward that they should be held like broadcasters do. They have to produce a certain amount of Canadian content. That's going through from the TNRD's perspective, that's a good thing. From the Okanagan's perspective, that's a good thing. So I want to bring in, I'm still, still doing research, but that may be coming up and presenting to you. If you want to look at C11, you're certainly welcome to. So that's coming up. Gareth starts on the 25th. I anticipate about a month we're of easing myself out into retirement, which is really weird because everybody's asking me, so what are you going to do? Well, I thought I wasn't supposed to do anything, but I thought of a trophy wife, but that's, I don't know. Somebody says you have to get married for that. So I don't know. You know, I'm sort of keeping my options open and see what I'm going to do. But Gareth is great and we made a great choice. And he's a very personal guy and he's also worked for us before. And I'm really glad that he's, that you've chosen him. And I think he's going to do wonderful. So my story is about around 2003, 2004, I went to go scout in the winter, Chataway Lakes Resort, which is up Aberdeen Road outside of Merritt. My boyfriend at the time said, I'll drive you because the roads are really, really bad. And they were, they're really icy, but I felt I could do it, but he wanted to come along anyhow. We came along a corner and just as we did, there was a sea train logging truck. And that person had cut the corner. So we were going head on head. So we pulled over to the right into a ditch and we hit a big boulder. We were kind of on our side. So we were able to undo the window. So we were able to undo the window, crawl out the windows. And we looked and I have pictures. We were literally that far away from hitting the middle fender of the B one, of the logging truck. And had we gone any further, we would have gone underneath the C part of the logging train truck. So next thing you know, a bunch of forestry people there and they had just released their flagging person. They had seven, seven C train logging trucks up the hill waiting. So they got out. I phoned the C A O, who was John Smith at the town, told them I was in an accident. I'm fine. Took plenty of pictures. He said, well, Joe Post is, is in that area. I can have him come and, and help you out. Vicky, are you in shock? Are you okay? I said, no, no, I'm good. I'm good. Everything's good. Meanwhile, the logging people were moving this huge boulder. They were able to move the logging truck and they removed this huge boulder. And as I got off the phone, this was under the boulder, this horseshoe. And he says, I can't believe it. I've never met anybody in an accident with a big logging truck and survived. And I've had it in my office and I just came across it. And I remember telling somebody that when I go down to Vancouver or wherever I go, and I know you're in subjects of signs, as soon as I was on the number one and as soon as I saw the sign, Thompson Nicola Regional District, I can feel, physically feel tension leave. Cause I know people, I know the mayor, I know the C A O, I know the Latin Indian ban. If I get marooned anywhere, I know everybody I can call or I have a sense of it. And I just want to say thank you because it's the board that makes you feel that good. Whether it's a Coca-Cola, I can feel it. So thank you. It's been a pleasure serving you. And I'll see you around. I'll be phasing out, not, you know, solid out. I'll just be like, what's his name? Neil, Neil, no, not like Neil Young where you burn out instead of fade away. I'll fade, I'll fade. I am, I am that horseshoe, man. That was just something really weird.
Believe me, Ms. Weller, we cannot thank you enough. I think Director Laird wishes to make a comment.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I was just going to ask if the horseshoe stays in your office or does it have to go with you?
Oh, it's going with me, man. Which was interesting about that accident though, because I had to meet with I C B C and they didn't know what to do because they said, we have it as a forestry road, so it's your fault. And I said, no, you have a resort on that road. That's public. You can't build a resort and call it a forestry road if you're going to. So, so they changed the determination and it was geared that it was fifty-fifty responsibility. Since I wasn't driving, I got, oh, no wonder he broke up with me. That was the end of that. But thank you very much.
Thank you again, Ms. Weller. That brings us to item number four on our agenda, which is adjournment. Move. Thank you. Stand adjourned.